For improvement of the central business district parking. And whereas a proposed central business district parking lot. Retiming of North Adams, North Huron and South Huron aligns the recommendations of the central business district parking study and strategy. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorized staff to proceed with enacting the proposed changes. And to create a traffic control order in support of these changes.
I'll move.
Is there support?
Hello?
Is there a support for that?
Supported? Thank you.
Did someone finally support?
Yes. It was Councilmember Wilcox and offered Mayor Pro Tem Brown support.
All right, thank you. Discussion? Questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Langa, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
House Member Morgan?
Yes.
House Member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Motion carries with six yes and one no?
Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding the installation of speed control measures on Burton Court.
You have a memo for us? Or Ms. Westler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So earlier this year, we did receive a petition from the residents of Burton Court. Sixty-three percent of the affected area asked for a review of their speeding concerns and traffic concerns. I would like to apologize, one of the sentences from a template actually made it into the final version that referenced Garland. Obviously, this is Garland, and there is no large curve in Burton Court, it is a straight shot cul-de-sac. However, there were two crashes reported to the police in the period from 2011 to 2012. One was in July of 2020 and involved one vehicle, and one was in 2014 and involved four parked vehicles. Which one vehicle ran into several parked vehicles. Speeds were tracked in the area of one week in April, speed monitors were placed about halfway down the block. There was a very low volume on this. The highest speed on the street, however, was between sixty-five and seventy miles per hour. But the vast majority of drivers were well under the posted speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour with a ninety-fifth percentile of about twenty-three and a half miles per hour. Peak speeds and volume tended to occur pretty predictably between eight AM and nine AM in the morning, and again between four and five PM in the evening. Speeding in excess of thirty miles per hour only happened twice, both during the work weekend, there was no particular pattern. So that refers to both the person that was traveling between sixty-five and seventy miles per hour, and there was also somebody who was traveling between, but I believe forty and forty-five miles per hour. So those were the two sort of outliers in this particular survey. Overall, fewer than five percent of the vehicles observed were found traveling above the speed limit. So this is an interesting thing, that it is a cul-de-sac, however, it is directly adjacent to Perry School. And right off of Harriet Street, very close to Hamilton Street. So it does see quite a bit of traffic go by it, but it does not see a lot of traffic through it. So there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic, both immediately at the entrance, I suppose, of the street with Harriet Street. From Hope Clinic, Michigan Works, and Perry School, as well as from residents from the area who are traveling to and from Park Ridge Park. There are sidewalks in place on both sides of the street, and it is generally a very pedestrian-friendly sort of area from an infrastructure standpoint. So as I'm sure that you are aware, DPS is pretty constrained in how many speed bumps it can put out and take back every year. So we do take a very conservative view when we're looking at speed bumps. But we do recommend that we can update the intersection to include bump outs as part of any planned roadworks in the future. Harriet is on our, is on the horizon within the next ten years. We can also do some of the paint-only bump outs that you've seen perhaps over on Second Street, Prospect, and East Cross and Mansfield as well. We can also provide a center delineator seasonally, of course, at the intersection of Burton and Harriet on Burton. One of the concerns that we heard from residents is that they were particularly concerned with people traveling at a high rate of speed as they turned onto Burton Street. And then depending upon the success level of those particular interventions at the south end of Burton. We can look at other tactical style of interventions on the streets such as center median islands, or bump outs, or chicanes even, to reduce the road width. So there are some budget impacts, of course, if we do some capital improvements. So one time would be the cost of striping, cost of a center delineator post and its replacements. Recurring would be maintenance of that center delineator post, making sure it stays up or gets replaced. Speed bumps, those would be quite a bit more significant costs, both to purchase, to install, and to de-install seasonally. And I am happy to receive any questions.
I don't have a question, but I have observed that, I don't know, you might have put the speed machines out on a, on a slow day, because I have been on that street and I've watched any number of cars speed up and down. It's almost like, who can get down to the cul-de-sac and make the so-called the fastest? And last summer, spring or summer, I do know that a young child was hit right there near the, the intersection with Harriet Street. It was, it was not even down to the second house that, that that happened. Someone was turning in, or maybe at the second house, someone was turning in off of Harriet onto Burton and did strike a child there. So I think, I don't know, maybe, and I think in talking, the people talking with me about it. I think that they were pretty much thinking that speed bumps were the only way of slowing the traffic. But something definitely needs to be done there. Like I said, I think the day that you measured what was going on, it was a slow day. With only the two or three cars.
We did measure the speeds over the period of a week, so it wasn't just one day.
Okay.
And we looked at the data and the averages over that entire week. But of course, weekends may have a very different pattern than weekdays, or, you know, just, it depends, especially such a small sample.
Right.
What people's jobs are and what their travel patterns are.
Mr. Jones Chance, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, it looks like that the highest speed observed was between sixty-five and seventy miles an hour. We have another street in Ward One that had clocked similar speeds. I really like the tactical stuff. I just don't know that it's working. I think if we've got speeds of seventy miles an hour, I, I think that's worthy of a speed bump.
I do too.
So I think maybe on Burton, because it's, it's more narrow, that the center delineators could work, maybe we should try that. But if, if we were to, you know, approve something here, I would like to also add. Oh, I would like to also see us put some speed bumps on Second Avenue as well.
Yes.
The tactical stuff, I mean, I see the lines, I just don't know that they matter to the people who are driving seventy miles an hour on the street. I, I would like to do something on Burton. I think if we start with center delineators on Burton and see how that goes, but also put speed bumps on Second. At a, at a minimum, I think we have to do that. I mean, the study was done a year ago, we've, we've gone through the technical stuff, and I don't know if we have results from that yet. But yeah, someone's gonna get killed, and I don't think, I don't think we can wait for results. I mean, I hear this every single month at neighborhood association meetings about the speed bumps, every single, and if, even if, even if we do Second and Burton, they're still gonna be mad about Monroe and Jefferson, so. I would, I would really like for us to consider that. I mean, and really anywhere where we've got clocked seventy miles an hour. And I think of the four or five that these were, that were presented, I think we did like three last time we looked at.
Right.
Really, these two streets were the only ones where we have measured seventy miles an hour or more. And I, maybe my memory's wrong, but I think that's right.
So if I might interject, I'm sure that Ron will be able to jump in if I'm incorrect here. Right now, the lead times on a lot of materials are very long. So if we were to order additional speed bumps right now, we would likely not get them until the end of September. Which would mean you're putting them in the first week of October. And we tend to take up our speed bumps in October, because that's the beginning of snow season. So we'd be putting them in potentially for two to four weeks if that. If it so pleases you, perhaps we could come back with a report in, I'm sorry, in September. With the wrap-up on Second Street with some of the results and some of the data, and I believe some more of the survey results. Although I certainly do understand seventy miles per hour is very, very fast for many of our, in fact, any of our local streets.
The lines there at Michigan and Second. I saw them, and I'm, that's, I use that a lot. Wasn't quite sure about them, but that's supposed to be the, the line bump out?
Yeah, uh, that's second, yes.
Yeah, I don't know that that is really slowing traffic, because the thing is, that corner is a corner where you all, you have to pretty much slow down to make that turn. But once people make that turn and get on Second, they're off and gone. And even, I've seen them even with the lines there. Once they get around the corner and go on straight on Second, they're off and gone. So I do think we need something. And maybe, I don't know what can help. And putting them down in October and taking them up two weeks later, I don't know that that is what we want to do. But if there's something that we can do in the meantime, and maybe put down speed bumps next spring. I'm not sure, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I think I would, I would like to roll the dice with, with ordering, I mean, if it were, I would like to roll the dice with ordering them and see when they come. I mean, if we don't put them out till next season, great, but. But yeah, I mean, we've, we've gotta do something. You know, last year, when I brought this up, we were told about the tactical stuff, and that has happened. But I think, I think now it's just, it's at a point where we've gotta do something that will definitely work. And if you can only speed between speed bumps or risk ruining your car, I mean, I think that makes the most sense here. Or in any case, where we've clocked seventy miles an hour. That's my, video's dead, sorry, guys.
Okay, Mr. Morgan?
I was wondering, how much did it cost the city to do this study over a week?
To do the study is very low cost, we already own the monitors. It's a matter of having our signal specialist go out into the field, install them, come back a week and a half later, a week later, uninstall them, analyze the data. So I would probably say it's no more than four hours.
Okay, and, and has it been studied on the weekend? Because I know seventy, those are outliers, not to say everybody, you just said the percentile of ninety-two, ninety-three percentile going with twenty-three, twenty-four. So that is excessive, but it's an outlier, not, not, I'm not saying it doesn't call for some action. But if, if there was another study done on the weekend to kind of, I don't know if the week gave us all the data we need to make these decisions now, but maybe over the year it has. I don't live on that, in that side, but I know speeding goes through all different parts of the city. But I was wondering, are you gonna plan to do another study on the weekend or the days to see if more of those numbers are constant? Or are we just gonna let the ones that stick out really high move us to make these decisions?
So we can actually go back and analyze another week. But the period of time that we did analyze, I believe it started on a Thursday and ended on Wednesday, or a Wednesday. It was a week, but it did encompass the weekend.
Okay. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, could I actually make a motion about this?
Uh, yes?
It's a little last minute, but yeah, I'd like to move to add center delineators to Burton Court. And also to add speed bumps as soon as practical to Second Avenue.
Is there support for that?
I gotta ask a question, is this a discussion or is this a motion, a resolution we're reading?
He is making a motion right now.
Okay.
You can support it.
I think I heard, I think the mayor pro- supported. Did I hear you support it, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, you did.
Okay, all right. It's any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'm just adding this because we've already done the traffic study on these two streets, and speeding was recorded in excess of seventy miles an hour, so I think it's appropriate.
I do too. Okay, seeing no questions or discussion. Mr. Hilinga, would you call the vote on that motion?
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Uh, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one no.
Thank you. Can I have someone extend to?
I moved it to twelve, twelve-thirty.
Twelve-thirty? Is there a second? Or it's been moved and supported.
Dragging out of there.
Twelve-thirty, okay. Next item, please.
You do, Mayor Yedder.
Hi.
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 And the thumb, and the thumb.
Since our next item is a, a item for discussion. Would we want to, to make sure that we give it the proper attention? And I think it's one that really does need some attention. Would we like to maybe extend that to the next meeting?
Support.
Support.
I definitely think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay, I need someone to make that motion, I was
Mayor, it's just a discussion, mayor, it's just a discussion, no actions needed, I'll just put it on the next, on the next.
Okay, fine. All right, thank you. Next is what, boards and commissions?
Yes, so council, this is the board and commission nominations. I, I forwarded you the resolution approved this past November. There are four nominations for a single seat on the Ipsalanti Housing Commission.
Oh, wow.
Council will need to indicate by name, by vote, by indicating the name of the individual that they would like to see nominated for this seat. So the four nominations are Melvin Parsons, eight oh six Hillier Robinson Way, Anthony Williamson, non-resident, eighty-one fifty-seven Starland Court. Michael Simmons, four three two Jefferson Street, Edward Robinson, eight four three Madison.
I move to nominate Melvin Parsons.
Councilmember Morgan, these, these nominations were already put forward, so at this point, council just needs to vote. And during that vote, just indicate the name that you wish to nominate.
That'll be at the next meeting, correct?
Well, that will be at this meeting, so they can be nominated, and then they will be voted.
Oh.
So the, the policy that was approved for nominations of multiple candidates for a single seat during the boards and commissions nomination section of the agenda, council will indicate by vote which candidate will receive the nomination.
And then, to be clear, there's only two seats open on a housing commission?
There's a single seat.
One. One seat.
Look at that.
Four options.
Four for one, have we ever had that?
No, this will be the first time that this, this section of the policy has been used. So I don't know if wants to deliberate on this, or if they just want to get right into the vote.
Well, Andrew, I thought Anthony Williamson took his name out of the hat because he was a non-resident. So I thought it was only three.
I thought he might as well.
Um.
No, and I was not informed of him moving.
I think he would understand.
I was not either, and I do know that Zach was the one that brought Anthony's name forth, so. I don't know, I know Anthony, um, I do know that Zach would really like him on there because of his close proximity at the center to New Park Ridge, and the fact that he was at one time a housing employee. So he knows pretty much the workings of the housing system, however. And you're saying that we need to speak out the person that we are supporting, is that what you're saying, Andrew?
So when I called roll, instead of saying yes or no, you would say the name of the person that you would like to nominate.
Okay, all right.
Well, this, okay, so you about to call the roll now?
It's, it's up to council, if you wanted to deliberate on this for a little while.
I mean, if everybody had their own.
Like, yeah, could we bring this back next time?
We can do that as well. So this
I mean, if everybody has one vote, why would we deliberate? We got our own person we want to vote for.
It is up to council, whatever council.
You could convince me.
Like, I support voting on Melvin Parsons.
With your power.
He owns that new parkage.
Melvin is, Melvin is in the process of, of building, repairing, preparing a home for himself. Of have a head tap house in the township.
Well, so he
He's not gonna be there, he's not gonna be there that long.
He, when I talked to him, he mentioned that he would be there for another year.
Okay, when I talked to him, well, let's see, oh gosh, at the an event in July, he was saying that they're working on the house now, so. I don't know.
But the person I would vote for would be Anthony Williamson, but since he's a non-resident and all the plaque we got for non-residents being on boards, I'm gonna be consistent with my vote and not voting for the one I think is the best.
Well, I, I would be voting for Edward Robinson. He is a lifelong resident of the city of Ipsalanti and has lived in in the same neighborhood all that time, so I would, we can either go through these and, or we can.
No, I, I make a motion.
What's your motion?
I was, I make a motion, because I do think to probably, the vet, the, the people involved, I would, I would make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
I'd support that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported that we move the decision on the new housing commission member to, for the next meeting. Can we take, just, do we have to call the roll on that, or can we just take a voice vote?
I'll, if it's tabling, I'll call a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries and the nomination will, we have on the September fourteenth meeting. They're moving down the list, there are two nominations for the two vacant seats on the planning commission, Carl Schreier and Mark Arthur. The next section, Board and Commission Communications, during last week's HRC meeting, they approved a youth board and commission number recruitment flyer. Council does not need necessarily take action on this, but I wanted to see it prior to having it be deployed. And if council has any issue with it, I can send it back to HRC, but if not, then I'll just go ahead and start printing these for distribution. So is council okay with this flyer?
Oh, yes, I was okay with it.
No objections, then we'll move on to the board and commission liaison reports. The first liaison report is
Andrew, if I may, if I may before, if you don't have a skating report or something that really needs to be reported, could we go through those very quickly?
Please advisory commission?
Oh, thank you, really quick, we had a meeting on the twenty-second of July, where the, the people were talking about the hypodermic needles. And some ways to match that language with the state that was on the priority, getting the bylaws and things together for the leadership. And getting the agenda together for our joint meeting with YPAC on the twenty-sixth. I believe our next meeting is coming up, I think it's on the nineteenth, I think it's in conjunction with, no, with, yeah, with the, we got two meetings that they, YPAC and the medical marijuana appeal, so, but that's all I have for YPAC, thank you.
Human Relations Commission?
Um, the fire's been shared, thank you all for giving your approval, I'll report on our next meeting when we have it next month.
Arts Commission?
Nothing to update at this time.
Do Parks and Rec and Sustainability?
Parks and Rec met, it was fairly straightforward, I'm looking for my notes, sorry. Rufford Pool is running at very well. There's people looking for workdays at Prospect Park, there's Paul River Day coming up, where we had proposed having a and another site at the Penn Park, which is not gonna be feasible. Sustainability Commission did not meet because they could not meet quorum. I spent a good part of Saturday afternoon vetting a candidate with the chair of that commission, and so I'll be bringing that name up as a, as a nomination. At the next meeting. At the next meeting, but that, that commission has, uh, just had a, a commissioner resign um, because of other commitments, um, so they're, they're down, so meeting, uh, um, quorum is gonna be an issue for them, and so I'm looking for people, and if you have any ideas, um, please let me know. That's it.
HTC?
Nothing to report tonight.
Planning Commission?
Yes, uh, last week, or the last meeting, uh, Planning Commission, uh, met to, um, approve the zoning, bug fix changes that we also just approved. Um, the next meeting, uh, tomorrow is gonna be very exciting, um, we are, or they are, um, uh, making some zoning ordinance text amendments, um, and those are gonna include, um, accessory dwelling units by right, um, changes to minimum lot area sizes and, um, corner lot, um, corner lot dwellings are also gonna change, so, um, some exciting things coming down the pike and they'll be, uh, back to us soon, hopefully.
And the last one is CBA.
Hasn't met.
Okay, moving on to liaison reports, Semcar update?
Meeting next week.
Uh, Watts?
You know, we didn't have a meeting last month, we have one tomorrow.
Urban County?
Uh, haven't had a meeting.
YDDA?
Meeting is Thursday morning.
Runs a Rutherford Pool?
Uh, everything's operating fairly well, the, uh, been adjusting to the increased, uh, cases of COVID by, uh, requiring masks inside the building. Um, and that's been going very well, people are, um, complying with that, so. It's a very busy place and, uh, it's kind of closed, uh, Labor Day, so.
Council Propose Business?
Um, Mister Will Coxon?
Uh, spent a lot of time talking with folks in the ne- in neighborhoods about flooding again. Um, you know, some new people in Normal Park are experiencing some issues, um, they're having that checked out. Um, I checked out a couple of the people and I've communicated with Ron Akers about that. Um, the, uh, conversation earlier about, uh, the storm sewers was, was apropos, uh, regarding the concerns in that neighborhood, um, tomorrow night is the first night of the, uh, first public meeting for the public engagement for Penn Dam removal, um, and this is one of the focus groups. The, the first one is for the landowners on the impoundment. Um, I've been working with Christopher and, and Scott and Joe on, uh, my part of that presentation, uh, here on River Watership Council, we, uh, making a presentation. And then Summer Woods from the consulting firm of Woods and Watts is, is facilitating the discussion. Um, that's from seven to ten tomorrow, we extended it and we also made it, uh, a virtual meeting instead of a hybrid meeting because we couldn't comply with the Open Meetings Act with, uh, hybrid meeting, so, um, this is the first of three focus groups. This, uh, the second focus group will be next week and then skip a week and then we'll have a third focus group. Um, all this is on a, a Penn Dam landing page, which, uh, city staff has made, um, on the website. Um, so I encourage you to, to check that out, if you just go and search for Penn Dam on our, on our website, it should pull it up, so. Um, I encourage people to, to show up for some of those, um. Various staff and commissioners from the Parks and Rec will be at those to answer questions as well as, uh, subject matter experts from, uh, Limno Tech, which is the engineering firm, that is doing the sediment and, and structural studies on the bridges, so. Um, tomorrow, as I said, is the, uh, the landowners, and that's a very specific set of conversations, one of the main parts of this conversation, who I've heard, um, there are issues many times, um, but they still don't feel like they've been heard, so. My presentation and the Watership Council presentation and the discussion is, um, to encourage, um, you know, to, to let them understand that we have heard, um, and so, uh, to get more input and then that input will be put into a report, uh, uh, at the end of September, before the town hall, so, that's it.
Uh, Mister Morgan?
I'm gonna make these very short, very, very short, um. This morning, um, councilwoman, um, Mayor Pro Tim Brown and, and Brian Jones Chance and I and Zach Foster, we did a walk through Park Ridge, it was leaning lightning to pass out some of the flyers for tomorrow, it was, um, seven o'clock, six o'clock meeting, um, for the, uh, violence work group engagement, um. I've been, I mean, since we made a budget allocation to give, uh, the YCS money for their sports and arts program, I've been, um, in, in contact with the superintendent and assistant principal, and they're gonna have a, we're talking about creating some city and school connection where we would hand them a big check and they would hand us a key for education symbolically to connect us, um, to give us some kind of camaraderie as a football game upcoming in September, uh, at Ipsy, um. I would like to revisit the social equity program, um, ordinance that we have to give it some teeth, because I do believe the state is as really sparse in its regulation and enforcement and true definitions of what it could mean, um, I think when it first came out of is, uh, doing exactly what I thought it did, uh, not enough for those, this is, is intended for. And I do want to look and revisit the charter that talks about maybe our conflicts of interest between council people and those on commissions. I want to make sure we're all in accordance with that, so I would be revisiting some of those topics, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, Councilmember Morgan shared about our walk this morning, which was wonderful, um, but that's all for.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, just, um, I guess a couple of things, um, I had some complaints in the nine hundred block of Grant Street about, um, just kind of parking, um, difficulties with people kind of parking improperly. And, um, so I'm just wondering if maybe we could kind of have some extra, you know, patrols for parking around there, tapping at intermittent times and, um, people blocking, uh, driveways and, and whatnot, um. And, you know, I think that's it for tonight, I'll just save the rest for, for next time, since it's so late, it's not urgent in that respect.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Somerville?
I do not have anything.
Okay, um. Last week I went to the, um, the first one I attended with the, um, Mayor's Association's, uh, summer retreat and just briefly, uh, one of the things that was, um, we got a real report, uh, intensive report on, and I won't go into all the details, is that we do have a lot more money coming specifically for infrastructure, so we can look at, uh, so that it frees up some of the ARP money that we're getting, that we might have been looking to use for infrastructure, uh, we can, it frees it up for some other things. So the money that we will be getting, some money and supposedly some, a good chunk of money specifically for infrastructure and, uh, also some money for some other things that will be coming down for the government that also frees up, uh, some ARP money, uh, and I'm abbreviating that, um. Let's see, what else was it? Oh, I sat through a, there, we had a session on marijuana and, um, I will share more on that next time, on the marijuana ordinance, and there were some things that, uh, we might want to look at with our ordinance and maybe make some changes for the better. The, and, uh, Mister, uh, Jones Chance, um, shared some of the things from the concerns in the neighborhood, particularly Second Avenue, and, um, I, uh, want to, I think I did send, uh, Mister Chance, I don't know if you got it, Mister Morgan or not, and, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, I had intended to come to the, um, outing on Saturday. However, um, my niece that was there at the center, who, she had to go to ER and, uh, so I kind of, uh, inherited her grandson for that time, and by the time it was, um, he was picked up, it was over, uh, the, your event was, uh, pretty much over, so, um, that's it, I'm gonna keep it short. City Manager?
Good evening, well, yeah, good night. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um. Uh, two things, one is, um, you have a memo that, uh, was distributed, excuse my assistant. You have a memo and basically it's just spelling out, we need to answer those, that question um, in order to apply for our funding, our ARP funding, and the question was related to how we would, um, do our public engagement. And so it's just what we talked about with staff, just some suggestions of how we could meet that requirement. Um, I know council had talked about wanting to have a public hearing, and so we kind of, um, staff and I got together and we're just sort of recommending this three-pronged approach so that we have aggressive engagement, and there's no doubt that we've had engagement. Um, I want to report that I attended, um, um, I believe it was Monday. Um, Councilwoman Annie Somerville was there as well, uh, the Park Ridge, uh, recognition for their summer program. Um, it was outstanding, uh, the work that they're doing over there with the kids and the community, I was really, um, amazed. And I'm glad to have a partnership with WCC, um, to provide that for our community and for our kids. And I'll save the rest for next time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, uh, then other communication, the city council and police advisory commission joint meeting on August twenty-sixth, and council, please remember that we do have a meeting on, uh, Thursday, the nineteenth at seven o'clock, it's the appeal, we will hear the appeals from those that, uh, appealed the marijuana permits. So, uh, without any further ado, we are adjourned until seven o'clock Thursday evening. Everyone have a.